Good afternoon, early evening. Welcome to the Monday, July 10, 2023 Open Session Meeting of the Kent County Public Schools Board of Education. The first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. The administration is recommending approval of this gen- agenda. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the agenda is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is moving into closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, Adam Constas, legal counsel, and Kial Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, will move to closed session under general provisions Article 3-305B, which the first topic in that article is the applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay, extra duty, and any other personnel matters. The reason for a closed-session discussion of this topic, public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive, personal, and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. The second is 3-305B9, discussion of ongoing negotiations with KCPS bargaining units. This is to maintain the integrity of the collective bargaining process. 3-305B7, consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice regarding new litigation. The substance of discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. 3-305B8, to consult with legal counsel and/or consultants to obtain updates and advisory advice, excuse me, regarding pending or potential litigation. The reason for closed session is substance of discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. And then ours, also Article 3-301A1I. The topic is administrative function, review findings and recommendations of ethics panel in response to complaint and administration of ethics policy procedure in response to ethic panel findings and recommendations. The reason for closed session, substance of discussion is considered administrative function outside the scope of Open Meetings Act but is discussed during an otherwise closed session pursuant to 3-104. The administration is recommending that we move to closed session. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. McGee. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. The Board of Education will reconvene in open session at approximately 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Back to the second portion of our July 10, 2023 Kent County Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. Right off the bat, rather than reporting on closed session, which I will do in 17 seconds, I would like to welcome Ms. Messick as our student member of the board. Certainly, we will have a little bit of swearing in in a little bit, and she will lead us off on the Pledge of Allegiance in a few moments, but I just want to welcome you officially seated to the far right there. So, thank you so much. Okay, the next item is reporting on closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Dr. Karen Cops, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, Adam Constas, legal counsel, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, met in closed session under General Provisions Article 3-305B and 3-301A1I. The topics covered, 3-305B1, the first topic was applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay, extra duty, and other personnel matters. The reason for closed session, public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive, personal, and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. 3-305B9, discussion of ongoing negotiations with KCPS bargaining units. The purpose for closed session was to maintain the integrity of the collective bargaining process. 3-305B7, the topic was to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice regarding new legislation. The reason for closed session, substance of discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. 3-305B8, to consult with legal counsel and/or consultants to obtain updates and advice regarding pending or potential litigation. The reason for closed session was substance of discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. And then 3-103A1I, the topic was an administrative function, review findings and recommendations of ethics panel in response to complaint, and administration of ethics policy procedure in response to ethic panel's finding and recommendations. The reason for closed session, the substance of discussion, is considered administrative function outside the scope of the Open Meetings Act, but is discussed during an otherwise closed session pursuant to 3-104. This session was for information and discussion purposes only. Personnel actions will be voted upon by this board during the superintendent's portion of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Messick, if you could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Messick, I would ask if you'd join me down in front of the stage here. We're going to conduct a swearing-in for our new student member of the board, so we would like to do this. Can you raise your right hand? This is, just repeat after me, and if I go too fast, just kick me and I'll say no. I, Madison Messick, do swear or affirm.
I, Madison Messick, do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice.
Diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice.
Very good. Execute the office as student member of Kent County Board of Education.
Execute the office as student member of the Board of Kent County Education.
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
Got it. According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and just climb right in. So, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the June 12, 2023 open session meeting. The administration is recommending approval of these minutes. Do we have a motion to do so?
Can I ask a question? So, we're talking on Dr. Couch's report last month about the free and reduced meals for our five schools, and there's a reference to community eligibility provision. Is that another way of saying Title I, or is this something?
Something totally different.
Okay, gotcha.
And I think there was a typo in Section 11 when we adjourned, and I did a reminder of the CAC meeting. We have June 16 there, and it was July 17.
Or maybe we had a meeting tentatively scheduled for June 16, and we never had it?
I don't think we did.
Okay. Well, that, no meeting happened on June 16. We can agree to that, so.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, the administration is recommending approval of the minutes as presented from the June 12, 2023 open session meeting. Do we have a motion to do so?
I motion that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Ms. McGee. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ms. Messick, this would be a time where I would ask you for your vote, but because you weren't here, you've just abstained from voting from this evening. We'll get you on the next one. Okay, the motion passes as voted. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Gail, do we have a participant?
No.
Okay. We'll move right into the superintendent's report. Dr. Couch.
Okay. Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to officially congratulate Madison Messick for being our student member of the board, and I know that many of you may not know, but she was also a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, but this is her first official meeting as student member of the board, so congratulations.
Thank you.
The first thing I'd like to report is the Judy Center at Galena Elementary. A few weeks ago, we received notification that our Judy Center expansion grant for $330,000 was approved for FY '24. The Judy grant provides comprehensive early care and education services to children aged from birth to five years old and their families within a school's catchment area. So, it would be all of those students center within the catchment area of Galena. Fidelity to the intended Judy Center model is vital for accountability as we implement the blueprint for Maryland's future and continue to expand Judy Centers across the state. One of the things that I think is particularly noteworthy is that there were only three grants that were accepted in the whole state of Maryland, and we were one of them. So, that is really kudos to the staff. I know that Ms. Jacobo, it's Mr. Porter, and I think members of your team also participated in writing the grant, so we were successful. We also put in for a Judy Center at Rock Hall. We felt it was unlikely we would get both, but just to get one was amazing, so we're excited about that. Today, our summer school programs began. This was the first day of our summer school programs. We have summer school programs at each of the elementary schools, and the high school and the middle school programs are housed at Kent County Middle School due to the Kent County High School roof construction. So, I thought I would report on the numbers of students in each of the programs. Rock Hall Elementary had 54 students, Galena Elementary, 69, Garnett, Henry Highland Garnett Elementary School, 82, the Cub Club, which is the littles, 17 students, Kent County Middle School, 55, Kent County High School Algebra Boot Camp, 8, and Kent County High School Credit Recovery, 15. So, those were pretty good numbers for first day. The open site for summer breakfast and lunch is at Garnett. This is open for all of the community. We are serving, as of today, we served about 30 breakfasts on average, and as of last Thursday, we served 46 lunches. The benefit of having the open site at Garnett is that cold food can be refrigerated and reused again, so there is very little waste, if you will. Additional hot food can be made as needed, so essentially, we feel like there is very little waste. But I think the important thing to note is approximately 665 KCPS students are enrolled in either Parks and Rec, Horizons, or an internal summer program, which means so many of our vulnerable students are eating breakfast and lunch, so it's about 665. So, don't look at just the open enrollment, if you will, at Garnett, but look at the totality of the number of students that we're feeding through the community.
Isn't that, that's about a third of our student enrollment, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's available for all children in the county?
All children.
Under 18, not just Kent County Public School students?
Right. Anybody that shows up at Garnett will be fed.
Great.
And in speaking with Mrs. Noel, they were in contact with some of the homeless shelters, so if in fact there are anything, any food items that we would say throw away or not be able to reuse, they were planning on donating that food to the homeless shelters. But as she stated to me, because they're keeping the cold food refrigerated and only cooking the number of hot food items that they need, there's really minimal waste going on in those programs. We held two community meetings for the Kent County Middle School feasibility study. They were held on June 20th and June 28th. The meeting on the 28th was live streamed and also recorded. The recording has been added to the website for anyone in the community to view, and I'd like to report that we had a total of 45 community members and parents that were in attendance at both meetings. So, you know, we had pretty good turnout, and of course, we had some that were logged on for the live stream, and then anybody that didn't attend the meetings, or anyone that wanted to reacquaint themselves on what was said at the meeting, they could access that on the website as well.
So, what's the next step? I know we're.
We'll talk about that at the next agenda item, but that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Couch.
Oh, I thought it was, yeah, I'm looking at that. Sorry about that.
It's a great segue into the next item, which is the KCMS feasibility study update.
Okay. So, I'm not going to go through, I'm going to go kind of quickly through. This was the presentation that we presented, and I know that that presentation lasted, you know, 30 to 40 minutes. I don't intend to take up that much time, but just to reacquaint everybody with the Kent County Middle School feasibility study and where we're at at this point. Just the whole agenda is the introduction, the existing facility, design options, and next steps. We talked about the methodology, all of the individuals that have been involved in the feasibility study itself. You'll see GIP associates. We also had someone local, which is Davis Moore, Sharon and Associates, and a number of other consultants that have been working with Crabtree, Rorbar, and Associates. And so, they've been pretty active in this feasibility study. The whole purpose of the feasibility study is to determine the conceptual feasibility of multiple options for the modernization of Kent County Middle School. So, we looked at a number of options, which we'll briefly go through. The design goals were to identify and address existing facility needs to modernize a facility, realignment of middle school grade configurations, which we are recommending grades five through eight. This would provide additional space in our elementary schools so that we could house our three-year-old programs at our elementary schools, address functional and educational deficiencies based on the ed spec that was developed and that this board approved a couple of months ago, and provide preliminary construction and project costs for all of the options. The design team looked at all of the existing drawings, they looked at the ed spec, they investigated the building envelope, they really spent a lot of time at Kent County Middle School observing the daily site traffic, and also gathered input from administrators, staff, and building administrators. They also evaluated life safety, accessibility, building codes, program needs, life cycle expectations, sustainability goals, and safety and security. The methodology was to provide the school system, the Board of Education, with cost estimates, including all the construction costs, so that we could make informed decisions about the option that you would like to pursue. The estimates do not include design and engineering fees, permit costs, testing and inspections, financing or furniture, and furnishings and equipment for the new middle school. We talked about, and this was brought up at the second meeting, what are we doing with regard to safety and security? So, we updated this slide to note that the new facility, whether it be a renovation of the existing facility or building a new facility, we would look for ways to be more safe and secure with regard to the facility itself. Look for security goals, look for security solutions, clear and obvious main entry points and secure vestibule, and then looking for ways where we could designate, and if you will, lock down certain areas of the school building itself in the event of an emergency. So, that's the beauty of being able to design a new middle school, is you can consider all of the safety features so that if there is a crisis, this new facility would be probably the most safe and secure facility that we would have. We would look at site design strategies, protective standoff perimeters, site access and routes, site visibility surveillance, also look at facility design strategies, the structural hardening of the facility itself, look at layering, building security, and building surveillance. So, all of that would be considered in the design. We haven't gotten to that spot yet because we have to figure out which option we're going to go, but in the design phase, they would be looking at all of these issues to make sure that we have a school that is very well-designed for safety and security. The operational measures in terms of staffing, policy procedures, and building analysis would all be considered. The existing facility, one of the things that we talked about is the current structure that we have now has a multitude of design flaws, if you will, because you'll see the initial structure was built in 1950, then another portion in 1952, another section in 1960, and then the most recent structure was in 1976. So, there are many problems when you look at this facility because just adding on and not really considering the flow of what we have has created a design that is not workable in current standards for middle school students. This is the existing facility. You'll see the roof is problematic, and that's what really brought us to this point. When we did our six-year strategic plan, we looked at all of the projects that needed to be addressed right away, and we knew when we'd get to the middle school structure that there were several systems that needed to be addressed. So, the question was, do you want to continue to put more money into a very old facility that has major structural problems, or do we want to move forward in a complete renovation or building out a brand-new school? A lot of the problems, and of course, you know, these are just a few of the many problems of the school, and I know some people that were in, some community members that were in the, or attended some of the presentations said, well, why is the middle school so much in disrepair, and have we shrunk our duties in terms of making the repairs that needed to be made for the school? Well, you'll see a lot of the problems with the roof and the ceiling tile. We've done our best to address those situations, but the roof itself is incomplete, it's in roof failure, so we have to replace the entire roof, and that's kind of where we're at right now. And so, there are other situations in terms of the bathrooms. And so there are other situations in terms of the bathrooms. They are not ADA accessible, nor do they accommodate ADA situations. We have a upstairs that doesn't have an elevator, so we have to make accommodations for the students if we were to have a student in a wheelchair. You know, those things have to be addressed because there is no elevator. Many of you know that there is an elevator at the high school. So those are the kinds of things that we have to consider when renovating. If you renovate an old building, everything has to be, has to be brought up to ADA compliance, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act. The existing facility is, was built to hold 645 students. The current enrollment is 400. And I think one of the things that we talk about when we think about SRC, which is state-rated capacity, you look at, you know, a lot of the standards that were in place in the 1950s and the early 1970s are not really conducive to an educational floor plan for current modern middle school standards. In other words, when the school was initially built, we probably didn't need spaces for collaboration. We didn't need spaces for individual one-on-one, providing those individualized services to our students. And you'll note that in this facility right now, we don't have those spaces. So what ends up happening is you take an entire classroom and you try to make it work. And it doesn't necessarily work for what needs to happen with providing services to our students. The proposed SRC would be to house 612. The projected enrollment for grades five through eight, which is our current enrollment, would be 520 students. And the construction budget per ed specs would be 41 million. The budget includes building construction, site development, contingency. It does not include site acquisition, consultant fees, and escalation of costs. So if you look at the existing space analysis, you'll see in blue, there are many rooms that are oversized and spaces that are oversized, but then there are still quite a few that are undersized. So there are problems within the current structure and the current floor plan that we have in, in place. And so that had to factor in to the design and recommendations that we'll, we'll come forward with all the options. The existing middle school site, um, the bus drop-off, the parent drop-off, the staff parking, receiving, and the community recreational areas were all areas that the consultants and the architects looked at. And the existing site challenges were their limited onsite parking. Buses do not fit in the bus drop-off zone, so there's a mixing of cars and buses, which really creates, um, safety issues with the students. And there's no onsite parent drop-off. So those are problems within the existing middle school site. We looked at five options, and just briefly talk about those options. Option one was to renovate the existing school. And the cost for doing that after the analysis was just under $50 million. And the issue with option one is if we went with that option, it would take about 40 months to complete the project from start to finish, just simply because, you know, you're going to have to figure out a way to move the students out of the facility, renovate certain aspects of it, and it's just, it's be a complicated, doesn't mean it can't be done, but it would be a complicated option. Option two was replacement of middle school at the Chestertown site. That cost is about $55.8 million. So I think, you know, the things that this board has to consider, the options that you have to consider is, do you want to put $50 million into an old structure? And then you still have an old structure with updated, I mean, I guess it's kind of my example is you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. So, you know, the point is that you can do some of the updating, but you've still got a really old facility. And so do you put 50 million into an, an old building, or do you spend another 5 million and get a state-of-the-art facility that would take 24 months to build? The school board eliminated option three was to build a new middle school at an alternative site. We had a couple of options that we looked at, and neither one of them were really conducive and would have added considerably to the cost of the project. Option four was replacement of the middle school at the Wharton site. And that was at a cost of $54.2 million. It's a standalone, and, but it would be at the, at the Wharton site or close proximity to the high school. And then option five is a replacement as an attachment to Kent County High School. And that is the least cost of all the options. But as you'll note, it still takes 20 months, and there are problems and considerations that we'd have to consider with option five. Option one, just real quick, looking at this particular option to the existing school, the architects came up with this floor plan that they looked at the needs as outlined in the ed specs. You'll see that there are, the seventh grade, um, classes are together. The fifth grade would be on the second floor. And, um, the eighth grade, sixth, sixth grade would be together, and eighth grade would be together. You'll see special education courses, classrooms that are assigned in close proximity to each of the families, if you will, the fifth grade family, the sixth grade family, and looking at spaces that would update and provide more flexibility for educating the students in a more state-of-the-art Option one is, the, the opportunities are, we would maintain the existing neighborhood site. It supports the learning team concept, improves building systems, energy efficiency, ADA accessibility, and improves the site traffic circulation. The challenges are, it's a small site. We'd have to do phased renovations, occupied construction, portable classrooms. And as you know, the biggest downfall for this particular option is the long duration. Many schools, many classrooms would still be without windows. You can't really address that. That doesn't change because you're still renovating an old building envelope. The interior adjacencies are not ideal, and inefficiency of existing building envelope challenging renovation, and abatement of hazardous materials would be a challenge for this option. Oops. Sorry. Option two is replacement of the middle school at the Chestertown site. It would be a completely new building, but it would be on the opposite end of the old building. So it would be closer to Heron Point, if you will, and be built on that part of the campus, and basically using the same floor plan. Again, a two-story structure is the way we would look at it because it's a small site, and it makes sense to build up. So we don't have the space to build out. So we have to build up. So I'm not going to go into all the spaces, but pretty much all the spaces are the same. Option two, it's a 24-month, um, construction duration. It would be about $55.8 million. The challenge is, again, it would be a small site, and it would have some impact on the use of outdoor play areas during construction. So there are other ideas for how we might acquire some other play areas or utilize other play areas, but you would not have it directly accessible with the middle school during this construction. But it would greatly improve a lot of the other opportunities that we talked about. We eliminated option three, so here's option four. It's, we would build at the Wharton site campus plan. It would be close to the community center. It would be close to the bus depot, have access to the high school stadium, and it would be a new Kent County Middle School. Existing site challenges are difficult wayfinding. The high school entrance is hard to find, so it would be mixing of cars and buses. So that, you know, that is kind of a problem with, with that site. Replacement of the middle school at the Wharton site, same, we, they went ahead and kept the same floor plan, if you will, building up again because we had limited space, and it made sense to just keep the same floor plan. Option four would be 18 months duration. The cost would be 54.2 million. Um, the opportunities are opportunities for educational alignment between the middle school and the high school. So there could be, say, some students that are more advanced could potentially take high school classes. There could be some, some more alignment between the middle school and high school, particularly with CTE, supporting the learning team concept, a new, modern, energy-efficient building, efficient building organization, and good traffic circulation and parking. That would be separate from the high school. The challenges are, the construction on the campus would have minor impact on the high school and bus depot. Option five is an attachment to Kent County High School. And you'll see where, again, these are just conceptual recommendations. If we were to choose this option, there might be some decisions on building at a different location. But at least this is what made sense to the architects, and this is what they were proposing in the, if we were to attach the existing Kent County High School. Again, it pretty much mirrors us, still a second floor plan. There would be some basic improvements to the high school. And I think we talked about this at one of the presentations, that it's, one of the advantages of option five is we thought we'd get a lot more improvements to the high school. But because of the cost of what we would have to do in order to build up the middle school, there would be minimal improvements to Kent County High School. There would be a, an auxiliary gym that would be used by Kent County Middle School. But for evening events and those types of things, there would have to be a shared gymnasium, and there would be a shared cafeteria. So there are some downsides because there would be some interaction of some of the high school students with some of the middle school students. That is not, there, there can, there is no way to completely isolate the middle school students from the high school students in this option. Here's a recommendation on what they would do with the floor plan. Again, keeping in mind the families, keeping the fifth grades together, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And then building on that location of the high school so that they would have easy access to the gym and the cafeteria. So minimizing the impact and flow of high school students with middle school students, but knowing there will be some interaction between the two groups. Option five, it would take about 20 months. And the reason why it would take longer is because in some cases, you would have to build out some of the improvements to the high school before you could actually start building out what was needed for the middle school. The opportunities would be, potentially, there would be a new entrance, an identity for the high school, and improved site wayfinding, improved separation of bus and parent traffic, and cost savings due to shared facilities. The challenges are the difficult scheduling. Because the high school is on a block schedule, and the middle school is on a seven-period day, it makes for some difficulty in scheduling. And so some of the shared facilities are not easily meshed together, if you will. No comprehensive renovation of the high school, which is why we thought this might be a good option for us, hoping that with the cost, we could do much more at the high school. And due to cost and limited availability of funding, it was not possible. No outdoor place, place space near the addition, some phased construction, and more opportunities for mixing of fifth and eighth grade students, fifth through eighth grade students, and potential mixing of middle and high school students. So just in a quick overview, the addition and renovation of the middle school would be short of $50 million. Replacing in Chestertown, um, on the site of the middle school, but on the opposite end, $55.8 million. Replacement of a new facility, separate at Wharton, and then attaching to the high, and that would be 54.2 million, 18 months, and then attachment to the high school, 20 months, with $48.1 million. What I would state is that in option four, and I don't know that it was clearly communicated, there would still be a auxiliary gym. But there is, in this particular option four, what the architects are proposing is that there is a warming kitchen. So it's not like their own kitchen. They could still eat in their own facility, but the food would be, have to be transported from the high school to the, to the middle school. To have their own kitchen would add more cost to option four. So, doesn't mean it can't be done, but that's what they've got.
Well, they have a cafeteria, so to speak, to sit and eat?
Well, it would probably be an area that I've, when we went to go visit some other schools, um, middle schools around the eastern shore, they, they had an area in the gym that was kind of marked off for, for eating and that. So you'd have a place or a cafet, excuse me, a cafeteria that would be solely for eating, but there wouldn't be a kitchen, if you will.
Yeah, that's true. So what is, generally, does a kitchen cost?
Um, I don't know.
Because I'm wondering if that, if the kitchen were added, if it would bring the cost close to the Chestertown site. And that's why the one out at Wharton is a million dollars less. I don't know what a kitchen, all that equipment and everything's got to be expensive.
Right.
I didn't know that before.
I didn't either.
Yeah. Yeah. So that was, that was one of the things. I mean, again, if you've already got plans for the cafeteria, but not the actual kitchen, you're right. I mean, the, the equipment is going to be costly. So, again, thinking about the Wharton site, trying to look at, at least with the IAC, they were trying to think of ways in which we could share facilities, if you will, and try to cut down on costs.
Um, I just had a question. As far as them eating in the gym, or a part of the gym designated for that, would that mean that while lunch is going on for all the different grades, that they won't be, make use of the gym?
No. I mean, there would still be a provision to where they could still have access to it. I mean, it just depends upon how the design is. I mean, it'd still be a place for the kids to eat. Like, we saw the, the sharing of facilities at some of the other schools that we visited. You could still have, um, it, it just depends upon how the design is. But let me just go and say that there would not be an individualized kitchen. So how the design actually comes out is how, you know, we would work with the architects to finally design the building. So I don't have an answer for that exactly because I think it's fluid in terms of how the final design would be.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure they would do it so...
But there would not be a kitchen in this option.
I'm sure they would do it so that the children aren't getting hit with a ball while...
Yeah. No, hopefully not. Yes.
If they're close enough with the kitchen.
So is that something that was just sort of formulated to help bring the cost down? Because this is the first time we've heard about not having a cafeteria or kitchen.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So next steps is a schedule. We reviewed the community input process on June the 10th, and we talked about when we would have our meetings. The first meeting was June the 20th. The, that was in Chestertown. The, that was in Chestertown at the middle school. The second meeting was at Wharton on the twenty-eighth. We livestreamed it and we recorded it. And so that presentation can be accessed on the website. It's our hope that the board will narrow the options to two options from four so that we can present it to the county commissioner sometime in August and get their take on which option they like. And then hopefully, either in August or September, the school board will work towards one option. In the meantime, the reason why it's important to kind of narrow it down, if we're looking at individualized facilities, in other words, a standalone facility that's not attached, say that's the option you go for. You know, the IAC was, in the beginning, was really trying to push us towards a, an attachment to the high school. And I think that once we talked about all the pros and cons, there are a lot of cons about doing that particular option. I think the hope was that we would be able to do more work on the high school and actually do some major renovations at the high school. And that was really not the case because it was going to add a considerable amount to the cost. So, in order for us to begin engaging in conversations with the IAC, if we narrow it down to two, then we can start saying, okay, so say we, we want to eliminate the attachment. Then we can start, Dr. Lieber and I can start talking with the IAC and saying, this is the direction we're going. These are the top two options that we have, and these are the reasons. And try to get them on board to seeing the rationale for why those two options are the best options for our school system and for the community. And, and then hopefully, you know, we can move forward. Once we adopt the one option that you would like to move forward with, then our commitment is to go forward. Dr. Lieber and I have already found the document that Garrett County put into place when they received more funding than was allocated by the state for one of their schools. And so we're trying to copy similar language. Because right now, it'd be a fifty-fifty split. Fifty percent would be paid by the state. Fifty percent would be paid through the local budget by the county. What we're requesting is that the state consider giving us seventy percent or eighty percent, and then the county commissioner is only having to come up with thirty or forty, or thirty or twenty percent of the cost, which makes it a little more affordable for the county to consider. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. And then, oh, so I'll go back to this. So I don't know if you would like to look at that and kind of go from there.
Do you have, sorry, do you have any feedback from the community that you can share, or stuff that came in via the email that you could share with us?
Actually, as we would kind of expected, the people that showed up at Wharton seemed to be more focused on building at Wharton, a standalone at Wharton. And the people in attendance at Chestertown were build new at Chestertown. So it was kind of, goes back to a fifty-fifty.
I have a question. This cafeteria thing just bothers me a little bit because no one brought it up until tonight. So I would like to know what it would cost to add a cafeteria, and would it bring the cost of the building out here in Wharton to the same, the cost of the one in Chestertown? Because I think bringing the food over from the high school, I, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we brought it up that we thought it could be problematic. Is it going to be two million dollars? No, it won't be that much.
But it could be close to the cost of the school in Chestertown.
Right, and all I'm asking for is, I mean, I don't think it's, it's going to change in terms of what the top two options are. And I think that those are all things that we would have to address in terms of the final build-out. It might be the same amount. But ideally, I think we have to make decisions on what's best for our students.
But did they know, in the, did they know they were going to do this when they started this process? Or is there something new, just drop the cafeteria?
No, I, I think that that was something that they, because the IAC wanted us to look at trying to be cost-effective, if you will. And so that was one of the ideas that the architects had. Whether we agree with it or not is something that we'll have to consider with the design.
Just looks a little skewed to me. The other question is, could we have a, like, a community portal vote? You know, so if the community decides to want, you know, and advertise that to have, like we did before, didn't you do something?
And it was a fifty-fifty split.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me. I just wanted to ask, because I've been at the school and had lunch with my granddaughter. How much are we doing from scratch? That you need an oven and, you know, scratch, homemade?
Well, I think part of the issue is if you're going to build a brand-new school, you're going to want to have new equipment. I mean, I think that's the question you're asking. What can we salvage from the old buildings?
Mm-mm, no.
Okay.
I'm asking how much we're going to do from scratch that we're going to be using it, that we have to have a complete kitchen to the point where you need an oven, the top. I'm not, I'm not trying to say that, um, they don't deserve a kitchen because most places have a kitchen. But you do have the high school right next door, and really, it doesn't take much to have the hot heated bags to bring it over. And if they have warming kitchens, half of the stuff that they serve probably only needs to be warmed.
Right.
So when you consider all of, I mean, the total cost, and when you consider what type of budget that we have been working with in Kent County.
Right.
And we're just trying to educate our children. And we're going to feed them. You know, we feed them every summer, and we don't have, you know, all summer and different things like that. I mean, if it is something that we can work with, you know, I'm...
And I, let me, let me clarify and add one other thing. It's not that there wouldn't be any warming capabilities because we would have a warming, maybe I would should say a warming kitchen, but not a complete kitchen, if you will. So there would be a part of a kitchen, but not the ability.
So the food wouldn't be prepared on-site, right.
Right, but there would be a place to keep the food warm. It would be prepared at the high school and then brought and delivered to the middle school. So, I mean, I, I have some, some concerns about that. Like, how's that all going to play out? Has it been done in other places and other schools that have middle school and high school on the same campus? It has. I mean, and that it is being done in other school systems. But, you know, once we get to the place where we say, this is what we want, then, you know, we can advocate. Ultimately, we've got to get the IAC to support the idea and the, and the recommendation. So what we want, we have to be able to justify and, and be able to gather all of the funding that we need to do whatever design.
I don't think that the decision on the kitchen should, should be the deal breaker for, for this part of the process.
Right.
Especially if there, you know, if we can get seventy percent or eighty percent on the state.
Then all of a sudden, maybe it's different.
Then, then we have a little bit more room to go, okay, now, let's, let's make sure that we put a kitchen in.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I would just add, you know, to me, I mean, looking at the four options. I mean, from what I heard, option five was just a non-starter, right? So, so I'm not trying to suppose or make it seem like five is like off the table, but I thought that came through pretty loud through.
I think number one's a non-starter, too.
So, so, yeah, so, so for me, I mean, just going down that path of understanding kind of, and, and, and we could easily ask each other, like, you know, how do we feel about one and five? But the message from the community seemed like one and five was pretty much off the books, right? So, so again, valuing that opinion, and I will just say for me, you know, looking at two and four as options, I think are the two options I would go with, with the idea that I, I would like a little bit of kind of clarification and due diligence on that because, you know, it is one thing to provide from the high school, but it can also go the other way. If there's a system failure or something, there's a, there's a benefit to that.
Backup, yeah.
Right, so, and, I don't know. I don't know enough about cafeteria service and like bags and all that. I mean, I can only remember when my son was little and the bags were coming in. But, but I would be, I would be inclined to understand a little bit more about that and what that means and, and how the cost. I mean, if it's a million and a half, okay. If it's a million, if it's a half a million, I don't know.
Yeah.
So...
What also would that mean in terms of staff? Would a couple of positions be eliminated if we don't have people preparing food on-site?
I think you'd still have to have people that are bringing the food to you. So I don't think there's going to be any savings of people, per se.
The decision is ultimately ours, right? We make a presentation to the commissioners and bring them into the loop, but it is our decision, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I think there's a misconception in the community that the commissioners have a say in, in where the location is.
Well, I think this board wanted to get, I mean, ultimately, they are the funders of the local money, so you want their support.
Right.
So I think anytime you can engage in discussion with the county and getting their support for one of these options, I think the better off we are going to be in the long run.
Well, and I think to your point, I mean, engaging with the commissioners to talk to them and, you know, and, and asking them to look at all of the pros and cons. I mean, as I was looking through all of the options, two and four had the most pros where the other three had the most cons.
Yeah.
And so when you look at everything involved, you know, it, I mean, anything could be decided, but that seemed to be the direction.
I mean, based on what I heard on the twentieth and the twenty-eighth, options two and four seem to be the logical two options that we ought to be focusing on and trying to hone in on some, some more details.
Yeah, the, the, the one thing that struck me a little bit about considering Wharton as the site is, two administrations ago, when Anthony Pack was the superintendent, which is more than eighteen years ago, he was already saying, we need to build a brand-new middle school on the Wharton campus, so...
Right, I mean, you'll see, the options are the close proximity to the community center. So there would be some ways in which the kids could access that. The downside, obviously, is that, I mean, maybe it could be, I see it as a pro and a con, is that there would be some joint use of outdoor facilities. So, I mean, again, that could be a con as well as a pro.
As a high school kid, Maddie, how would you feel about seeing, and I want you to be honest, middle school kids on your turf, so to speak?
Well, we had the, we had the Makerspace program this year where we had some eighth graders come over and like, um, use the facilities and the, and they joined the Makerspace club pretty much. And that was really cool to see. And like, a lot of my friends did it, and it was really cool to see because as a middle school student in Kent County, I didn't have that. Like, we didn't have any after-school clubs or sports or stuff like that. So I feel like not a whole lot of high school students are going to be like, no, you can't play sports.
Okay, yeah.
No, you can't use our stuff.
Well, I mean, there's some advantages in terms of there could be some interaction, again, with the eighth graders and, and, for instance. I know in my former school system, the high school and the middle school were just right across a, a non-busy street, if you will, from one another. And so the eighth graders could participate in the band program. So they were part of the marching band. And so it kind of built up some of the programs. I mean, there could be some, some logical, um, uh, shared clubs or extracurricular, if you will. But obviously, that's, that's way ahead of the game, and we still have to figure that out. But there could be some options for that, and we'd have to think about what you want to do as a school board and what makes sense.
I have a question. Do you have anything positive to say about Chestertown?
Of course.
I'm just, we were all talking about Wharton here. I'm just wondering if that's still on the table or is it everything?
We're talking about limiting it to two and four.
I understand, but we're all talking about the Wharton site. It just, I don't know, I've thought all along that you're pushing the site, which is fine. But I just wanted to hear if anyone has anything positive to say.
I mean, if we were pushing, we could say we only want to offer up one, and that's it.
We're not pushing. We're going to do that, we're going to do that in a couple of weeks or a month.
Right, but we're not doing it tonight. So we're looking for two options, which, which appears as if it's a Chestertown and a Wharton site, open for discussion. But there's, there's basically two Chestertown sites and two Wharton sites. So either way, you know, it could go one way or the other.
I would like to say, especially after that, I would like to say that I'm not favoring, you know, one place or the other just because of the location because I think that the Chestertown site is more favorite for the people in Chestertown, the property, and you're thinking about, you can put on the, advertise that we have a school, you know, we have the middle school located here, et cetera. And the property, it, it just makes it better for when you're advertising things like that. And that's great, you know, but I don't want us to just decide this is where we're putting it for that reason. I, I want the school to be built where it best benefits the kids. So whether that's financially, you know, where, where it helps us to do better buy them financially as far as the money is stretched further. If that's Chestertown, it's Chestertown. If it's Wharton, it's Wharton. But I don't have all those other agendas that have been put forth that I believe that some of the leaders and people have. Now, I could be wrong. Also, I want to say that even as we sit here, we're not favoring one place or the other. We just want, as far as I'm concerned, let me say it for me because I know how things get said, and then all of a sudden, it's, it's like a label on you or something. So I'm going to take that label off right now, throw it back at your bag. And, um, and what I'm saying is, that's, that's what I want. Now, when we started talking about the, the kitchen, I kind of little, you know, but I, if the children aren't going to be malnutrition or anything, I think we can go with that. But what I did want to ask, if, um, when they build it, will they build the, um, the facility, the part that they are using for the warming kitchen, will they build it big enough so that if they did want to add those items later, that they could?
It's a good question, as an option, yeah.
Because that, that would be good. You know, because we, if we don't have the money now, you still could do it later, and you'd, you'd have the space. You don't have to build on, you know, extra square footage and things like that. And when you were talking about the band, now that really kind of impressed me because we've been having a band that's like the click of the finger. So if we could add a couple of band members, that would be great, you know? And get, get them interested young because when they get over to the high school, it seems like, you know, no one's interested in joining the band anymore. We have to take a whole trailway bus in order to get to our competitions and different things. So it would be nice if we could increase the amount of students that participate in that. And, and I'm not just favoring Wharton, but I do see a lot of benefits. Like I said before, the late bus, I'm not going to talk much longer. But, um, and, and the tutoring that Carolyn is giving. If, if we get certain things that's, that's been given to us through the blueprint and Carolyn, then we have to make use of it the best way that we can that's going to benefit our children. And in Chestertown at the middle school, they don't have a way for these children to get home if the, if the, um, if they stay after for tutoring because that's when it's, it's actually offered.
Yeah, if a kid stays late at the middle school, they can hop the late bus at the high school.
Yeah, but if they're in Chestertown, they have nothing to hop. And the thing is, the most, majority of the students that will not have transportation will be the ones who's lower in income. And, you know, they don't have that, that, that privilege to, you know, to have that ride and different things like that. But they're going to need the tutoring, and everybody needs to be able to take advantage of it. So, I mean, if, if the county, who may would like it to stay in Chestertown, can provide these things in writing, then we could consider it even more because that way the children aren't going to be cheated out of something that they can get in another location. I'm just saying. We, we really have to think about the children, not the grown-ups. We had our chance.
So, Dr. Couch, just as a point of clarification. So the feasibility study will be, will be conducted on the two options and not just one.
Right.
And there could be very, there's a high possib, or there's a possibility that either site could be more feasible or more advantageous than the other. And there's no, there's no determination as to whether that's a Chestertown or a Wharton site.
Right, no. What I, what I would say, just based on the, um, the community engagement, is it's pretty much a split between Chestertown and Wharton. And I think there are advantages to both sites. There's advantages to being in Chestertown, there's advantages to being in Wharton. So it's a matter of, unfortunately, the five of you are going to have to make that decision.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm, not to bogart the conversation, but I think... Yeah, so, I mean, not to bogart the conversation, but I think, I think if I were a middle school parent and I knew that the Board of Education was looking at a new building in either Chestertown or Wharton, I would be super thrilled with that. And I would not, as a parent, choose number one, and I would not choose number five. So my thought would be two and four, but I can kind of be persuaded one way or the other if someone had something else there for me.
I feel the same way. One thing I will say about Chestertown is that, at that meeting, the first of the two listening sessions, Megan Eflin, who was sort of speaking, I guess, for the Chestertown council, said that, you know, obviously, they're lobbying for Chestertown, but whatever was chosen, that the town of Chestertown would support the middle school wherever it was located, which I thought was genuine and very gracious.
So am I hearing options two and four?
Yes, and I'll say, I do have a student in the middle school, and I agree. I mean, having a new building is exciting, not that my kid will be there long enough to see that new building, but it is an exciting prospect, I think, for students and for parents and for the county to have a new school. So I do like both options two and four as new buildings.
Well, and I'll just add this too, I mean, I know one of the middle school administrators is in the room and potentially the second one, and I can't imagine how refreshing that would be to have a new space that was actually built
For you.
for an environment that is conducive to really teaching these students in a space that's custom-made, right? So that, to me, is huge, number one. Yeah, number two, I mean, let's see what the feasibility study says. That's going to speak volumes, you know? I mean, it might come back that one is better than the other. I do want to ask one just piece. I know if the Chestertown site, when you're moving from one end of the field to the other, did any, were there any residents that would be facing a two-story building and not the sky? Like, right up against, was there any kind of comments? I was just curious, because
I thought there would be.
You're literally picking it up and jamming it down.
Did you hear anything about Heron Point? Because there was also, Heron Point has been having some discussion about becoming a gated community, so.
I thought that we might have some pushback on that, but I didn't hear anything about that.
Okay, I know it's been
Just their own little village.
Okay, so can we move forward with selecting? The administration recommends two options for consideration, and I would like formal motion to adopt the two options.
Okay, Dr. Couch has just stated she would like to have, and she and the administration is recommending selecting two options for consideration in the feasibility study for the Kent County Middle School project. Do we have a motion to suggest options?
I feel like everyone is in agreement, Frank.
Well, you can make a motion and then
I was just gonna make a motion to vote for the two options that we want to pick, two and four.
We have a motion by Mr. Rhodes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions?
I just think maybe once we win, make it clear now that we're only dealing with two people, maybe we will
Two options.
I meant, yeah, two options, sorry. Maybe we would get, we might get some more clarity on what people really feel now that they only have to
Or you may not.
I know, we may not, you know, but I'm just saying, there's the possibility, yeah. Yeah, I can't believe
Can we vote, take a vote?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have had comments. Mr. Rhodes with motion.
Francois's second.
Francois Sullivan was second. We'll go ahead and we will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear no opposition. Just as a point of clarification, with Maddie not being here last time, she's also paid attention and heard about this. Is she eligible to vote as well?
Yes.
Great.
Are you ready?
Ms. Sullivan, your vote?
Aye.
Aye, we have all ayes, so the motion is passed as presented. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay, the next item is personnel actions. Mr. Hushen, you are already standing at the podium, so.
Thank you, President Getz, Dr. Couch, school board members. Each month, the board receives a report of stated personnel actions. Those actions are discussed in closed session, and then a vote is held here in the open session. With that said, the administration recommends approval of the stated personnel actions.
Okay, as Mr. Hushen has stated, the administration is recommending approval of the stated personnel actions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve this stated personnel action.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ooh, that was close. Ms. Dorsey has the second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes, thank you.
I'm abstaining from the vote.
We have one abstention.
Right. And if you'll just indulge me for a moment, I, now with the approval of the personnel actions, I would like to take this moment to introduce our new assistant principal at Kent County Middle School, which is Kelly Melvin.
Congratulations, Ms. Melvin.
And she starts tomorrow, right?
Yes. I think so. I think Mr. Buckle is hoping she starts tomorrow.
We're seeing some nods, so we know that's happening. Excellent. Excellent, well, welcome. Okay, the next item in the superintendent's report is board handbook revisions. Dr. Couch?
Okay, so as far as bringing forward recommendations for the handbook, I mean, we talked about we need to review this on an annual basis. July seems like the perfect time to review the Board of Education handbook, because that's when we have a new student member of the board. And so I took the liberty of addressing some of the changes that needed to be made on the handbook itself. And I hope you had a chance to look at some of the recommendations that I had in place. They're highlighted for you and for your review. I know that this is not something we're going to take action on today. It's just an opportunity to look at some of the areas that I thought we needed to consider for revision. The first thing is the preamble seems very outdated, and instead, I thought adding just the vision, mission, core values, the value statement based on our strategic plan made better sense. And so that's what I recommended, and there are some other areas. And I know for you as board members, you might have some other areas that you would like to be considered in terms of additions to the board handbook. So without spending a lot of time going through each individual change, hopefully, you've had a chance to look at that, and maybe you have other suggestions as well. We would be reviewing it the next board meeting, this is not
Yeah, this is just for information. So can I ask, just for the board members, are there any questions around the recommended changes that Dr. Couch brought through or brought forward?
I did notice in the student member of the board that we had asked at a previous meeting about clarification on what good standing was, so it's nice to see that that kind of quantified in that, in your edit.
Yeah.
So thank you.
I don't have a problem with any of the changes, I think it looks pretty good.
So I guess at this point, what about if you look through it and if you have some other recommended changes? It may take us more than a couple of months, if you will, to go through this. This is our first review. I know the last time we looked at the board handbook, we probably brought it back three times. So, you know, I don't expect you to have anything formal at this point, but just know that this is our time to review the board handbook.
I thank you for tackling it.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so, yeah, so obviously, we have the revisions Dr. Couch brought forward. I would encourage everyone to, the next board meeting, we'll go ahead and start, you know, going through that. And then if there's any other recommendations that you think that you may, you would like to discuss, we can do that. I mean, there's a few, there's a few that I see right away that I think I would jump on, but that's not my choice. I am one of five, and all of you are part of one, so we can, we can do that. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So that is discussion information only. The next item on the agenda is board discussion. Trish, I know you had mentioned you wanted to
Yeah, I'll start.
Start off, please.
Yeah, what I have to say tonight really isn't about anything specific at Kent County Public Schools other than I want to give a shout out. We had a near-drowning Friday at Betterton Beach, where three young lifeguards, all who are still current high school students, including two from Kent County High School, literally saved a five-year-old. And the aquatics director for Kent County Parks and Rec is a Kent County High School graduate, and the site supervisor down in Betterton is a Kent County High School graduate. And I just want to give a shout out to our community for raising such good citizens. And I've talked to the police, I've talked to the director of Parks and Rec, I've talked to their supervisor, and said that they just followed everything to the T. And I don't think people, I mean, one of them is just 16, and he's the one that noticed that something was awry. And I don't know that they've probably been able to take it all in yet, what a monumental thing they've done. But I just want to show my appreciation for the young people in Kent County. And the lieutenant in the sheriff's department says, from his experience, "Very rarely would this be the outcome that we should expect." And they were in the water within a minute, and they did everything right, and they were prepared. And I'm very grateful for them, so I just want to give a shout out to Kent County.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey?
Yes, I don't have too much to say, except for I want to congratulate and welcome our new student board member on today. I look forward to working with you. And I'm glad that, just glad that you're here.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan?
I want to just kind of agree with Trish. It was really, as a mother who takes kids to the beach, and also as a former lifeguard, it is astonishing what those kids did, and we as a community should be very proud, and should, they should be congratulated loudly and often, because that is quite an amazing thing that they did. I also want to welcome Maddie, and I'm looking forward to working with you, and thank you for being my neighbor. And really, it's been, you know, considering the busyness of the last few months, it's been a relatively quiet summer. I did attend the ESMEC 2023 Leadership Conference with Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Getz, and Dr. Couch, which is the Eastern Shore of Maryland Educational Consortium. And they had a number of great speakers, all local educators, including the State of Maryland Teacher of the Year, who was a kindergarten or pre-kindergarten teacher pre-K from Baltimore, and she was wonderful. You know, I don't know anyone in that room that didn't want to be in her class after she spoke to us. So I thank them for that, and that's it, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
I must just say, but I have a few things. I brought some handouts that I wanted to give to everyone about the education system. And Mrs. Giacomo, I have one for you, and I have one for everyone here, Maddie. And by the way, congratulations for your new The reason I brought these, you don't have to read them, I'm not going to read them now, but I had a, I've been trying to raise money for the planetarium, and I've been out to see a few citizens, and the response I got from one was, "Until the school system improves, we are not interested. You're at the bottom." And I said, "No, we're not at the bottom," and they said, "Well, you are." So, Dr. Couch, I ask you and your team to try to think out of the box. I know you're mandated by the state for all the teaching that's going on here, but there's a lot of great stories in these articles about schools around the whole country. And the reason I studied this in the last week is I want to see what's going on and how we can improve. So I'm hoping that you might be able to look through some of these and maybe give me some feedback someday. The next thing, in regards to the high school, I think that when the people from other counties come here, I want them to know that we mean business. And I think the high school has really improved. There's a new roof, the track has been made improvements, there's a discus jump, shot put, and the track is new and finished. The scored board has been fixed, the golf host painted. It'll be nice to see the KC logo on the field as it was during graduation. The center courtyard has been completely redone, the building signs pressure washed, and the yellow safety lines have been reestablished. All the trees have been trimmed. The wrestling department, all the signs, all the posters have been redone in there. The only area I've seen now, Dr. Couch, and I think you're in charge of this, is the back of the school needs help. Not a lot, but there's rust everywhere, and I'm hoping you can just maybe do a little bit of work to clean that up, so when people come here, it looks, because the whole school's looking great. So I'm hoping that we could do something, because it's really nice out there. And also, in regards to the middle school in town, at one of the meetings, they brought it up. Maybe we could, I know you don't want to spend money on bad, but maybe there are a few things in there that could be just fixed, just a few things that aren't major, but just to make it look a little better for the students, because parents brought that up, so. And I'm looking forward to a new year. I think we're going to have a great year, as a matter of fact. I want all our parents to be excited, I want all the students to be excited, I want the sports teams to be excited, and I just want to move forward and really do well, as everyone else in this board does. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Maddie?
Hi, everyone, I just wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity. As a student who's been here in Kent County and has gone to school in Kent County my whole life, I'm very excited to hold this position, and it means a lot to me. So as a calendar of events, I just wanted to say that I attended the middle school project meeting on June 28th in Wharton. It was, we didn't have a lot of people, but it was really cool to see a lot of community opinions, and I'm really excited for that project. The summer reading through all the schools and the public library, just wanted to remind everyone that that's a really cool program that we have. I personally submit a lot of my books and a lot of my reading time, and it's really awesome. You can win prizes and stuff like that. As Dr. Couch said earlier in the meeting, the summer acceleration academies started today along with the Cub Club and the Kent County High School credit and credit recovery and Algebra I boot camp. So that was really exciting, and I'm glad to hear those numbers. The CTE Discovery Program for incoming freshmen is being held 8:30 to 1:30, July 24th to 27th at the Kent County High School, Wharton. So that's a really interesting program that I didn't get to participate in, but I'm really excited for incoming freshmen.
What date is that, Maddie?
The 24th to the 27th. So I'm actually in the teaching pathway, the CTE pathway, and I really adore our pathways and our so I'm really excited for those freshmen. And then Next Gen Scholar service events, so the Next Generation Scholars Program offers a lot of summer service hours. So Tuesdays, we have blessing bags at the food bank in Rock Hall. There's a lot of opportunities to read and interact with Galena and Rock Hall Elementary School students. Thursday, July 28th, July 20th, is Shore River Service Day, which is really cool, and that's a really nice program that we partner with. And then Wednesday, July 26th, is the, is a middle school program. It was, as a Next Generation Scholar student and somebody who goes to these events, it's a really great learning opportunity, and I really am so excited to see them in the summer, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Maddie. So as you noticed, we didn't throw you right into the Dan, the old line stand here right off the bat. We'll probably mix it up, because I know it could be kind of weird, so, you know. But you have come to us with some huge fans on this board, two people who have spoken very highly of your work that you have been a part of on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I'm just really, really happy that you're here. You're, you've come to this with some big shoes already on. So certainly, you are definitely a force to reckon with, and we just really appreciate you, you know, dedicating your time and going through the process to get to get to this place, so thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate that. And so, yeah, Francois mentioned the ESMEC conference, which was really important to get. We attended a lot of legislative updates from Annapolis, kind of what's happening now and what's happening in the future, and that always changes. It's never one direction. You can spin around and it goes all different ways. But I bring it up because I think that what we started prior to or during this last legislative session, we have to be an advocate for ourselves. And so I think that as we, you know, look at legislation that comes down, and I think there were, I mean, I can't remember the exact numbers, but wasn't it like 700 bills and 400 or something? Had something to do with education or something? But, you know, it mattered, right? And we spent some time and we supported and testified and it makes a difference. And it also goes back to our commitment through the budget process. And again, I want to thank the county commissioners for engaging the way they did because together, I do believe that we can affect some change. And I think that we have to keep that momentum going. So, you know, really important to hear, really important to see. It's great to see other board members from across the state. They're living in our same shoes and they're dealing with everything that everyone is dealing with in the world of education in the state of Maryland. So it was great to be in that environment. And I thank Mr. Rhodes and Ms. Sullivan for attending as well. It was nice to, it was nice to have folks involved in that space for those that could be there. So thank you for that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new course approval. And I see Ms. Giacomo is coming up.
Good evening, President Getz, Dr. Couch, members of the board. And congratulations, Maddie. Super proud of you. You're going to shine up there.
I appreciate it.
This evening, the first thing I do is, would like to bring to you tonight is a follow-up to the presentation that Tracy Williams and Chris Hempstead are made during the last board meeting. So this is basically a request to seek approval to add two new courses to the program of study for Kent County High School. Those courses, as Chris and Tracy described before, include both African-American history and also American Sign Language. They left with you a description of both courses as well as an updated copy of the program of study. So with that, I'd like to just request approval of those items.
Okay, the Kent County High School administration recommends the addition of the two courses, African-American History and American Sign Language to the Kent County High School program of study. Do we have a motion to do so?
I make a motion to do so.
Ms. Dorsey has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask, is the expectation that we can offer them in '23, '24, this coming school year?
I believe that they are hoping to offer them this school year. I know we have posted both position, the position for the American Sign Language. And they've also had an opportunity to see student interest. And there was tremendous interest for both courses, so.
And I know I asked this last month and it might not be a question that you're able to answer, but I'm hopeful that, especially with the African-American history course, that we can involve some of our community partners. You know, we're sitting in a treasure trove right here of history, so.
Thank you for mentioning that. And Mrs. Hempstetter has said the same thing. So I know the high school, that's an important point to make when they're beginning to think through what that syllabus will look like for the year. If you had an opportunity to read over the AP program of study for the African-American history course, that's one of the things that they mentioned is there. Is not only spotlighting the history as a nation, as a community, but also looking, you know, locally in Kent County. So that is definitely the goal.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and we have a comment. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ms. Messick?
Aye.
We have aye, ayes have it. The motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please, next one. Roll it right ahead. New textbook approval. Go ahead.
The second item is also a follow-up to Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Hempstetter during the last board meeting. And this is related and just asking for approval of the book that would accompany the course for the African-American history course for seniors. The book is entitled African-American Odyssey. And it was presented at the last board meeting for information only. And we are coming back this time seeking approval.
Okay, the Kent County High School administration recommends adoption. Have they recommended Kent County High School textbook pending budget? Do we have a motion to approve?
I think I recall Ms. Williams saying that there was the book, but then there was also an online option that had a different cost associated with it.
Correct.
Preferred, preferred option was the book. Okay. Is there potentially going to be a time when we would want to switch to online?
Yes, we can always do that.
We can always do that, okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. McKee. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Could I ask a question about the black history? Well, do you think there'll come a time when they'll be able to take that throughout their high school experience or instead of just 12th grade?
I know that it is being presented as an elective. I think that's a great question. I don't feel that I'm the one able to answer that tonight, but I'd be happy to talk to Mrs. Hempstetter. I don't know if, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you know anything about whether or not that would be part of the electives, Mr. Pretlow, or?
At this moment, it's still for the 12th.
For seniors, so. But that's something they could consider probably moving forward.
Okay, because I just feel like if it's black history, I don't know if we can do it all in a year. Because it's like one semester?
Yeah, I think part of the issue, and I can't speak to it with absolute certainty, but I think part of it is just making sure, this is an elective course, so they're making sure they get all of the required courses in first. And that they pass all of the required courses before they expand and take optional elective courses. I think that was the rationale and the reasoning because they have to be college and career ready by 10th grade. So they have a lot of requirements that they have to get in place by the ninth and the 10th grade.
Okay, I guess I'm just thinking that we can just include it in history, just like we have to learn everything else that we learn about ourselves.
Yeah, I think it is included. I think there is portions of that that are included in the history. But I don't know that it's a dedicated course like this.
Okay, that could be possible. We may be mentioned. I just didn't see anything in that about myself when I was in school, other than that little book we'd read sometime that called me a nigger. Okay, I'm just saying. It's the truth.
Can I ask a question?
It's going to blacks.
Sure.
Would offering it for 11th grade, would that be our decision? Like, could it be something that the board comes back to?
What do you mean?
Like, right now, it's only offered for 12th grade. Would that just be an administration decision? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to know whose decision that would be.
Yeah, I think part of it is because they, the teacher that teaches it has to go through training. It is a course that's being recommended by Maryland State Department of Education. So there is a training course or something that they have to attend.
Correct. And we have had teachers that have been part of that initial initiative and they're very interested in getting, continuing. It's also offered as an AP training, an AP course. So I think your question, can we go beyond just the 12th grade as an elective? That is something that, again, I'll bring back to Mrs. Hempstetter and her team. But I think that's open for discussion in the future.
Well, this is just the beginning. I mean, it could be sort of a fluid kind of thing that, that it's more than just a one semester offering. The other thing is, like you said, you have to get your, it's like in college, you got to get your basic stuff out of the way. I think it also, considering that it's had a high interest already, it's an incentive for kids to get that stuff out of the way and keep their grades up so that they can take this course. Or courses. Maybe it'll expand to be more than one course.
Okay, we had a motion and we had a second and a partial halfway vote. So I'm going to, I'm going to call for the vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Okay, motions have it. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is K through eight science curriculum and textbook.
At this time, I'd like to invite Amelia Marcosian to join me. As you know, Amelia serves as both our local accountability coordinator and also our coordinator for the content area of science. Just very quickly, in January of 2023, Amelia really took a lot of time to assemble a group together that included both teachers, support staff, community members, administrators, to look at our current science options. As you know, our MISA results showed us that we really need to be sure that we're offering the richest, most quality type of curriculum and lessons and very engaging on a daily basis in the area of science. And one of the things that Amelia will share with you is that she took the time also to do research in terms of visiting other high-performing schools across the state to see what types of textbooks they were using in their courses as well. After talking to the teachers, there were some concerns with just sticking with discovery education. And as Dr. Couch shared during the budget information sessions, we were moving away from using discovery education and looking at other options in the area of science. So at this time, Amelia's going to bring to you our recommendation for information for K through five science and also tell you a little bit about a pilot that we would like to do this year for grades six, seven, and eight. So with that, I will turn it over to her and then I'll say a few words right at the end.
Good evening. I researched some of the highest-scoring schools in Maryland, our highest-scoring MISA as far as fifth grade and eighth grade and high school in the state of Maryland. And I analyzed what curriculums they were using, contacted those companies, and went through a process with our curriculum selection committee to kind of vet these curriculums. We looked at six for the middle school and high school, different curriculum options. And we narrowed it down to three. We looked at three major ones for elementary after we kind of narrowed it down to the NGSS National Science Standards. So after going through this committee process and really looking at what these programs had to offer, we gathered samples, we met several times. We really narrowed it down for the middle school option, our pilot being lab aids, which is what the eighth-grade highest MISA that district is using as their, and they have been using and that they're scoring the top of the state. So we're kind of bringing forward today a pilot for that lab aids program. And that is an evidence-based program. It is also a hands-on program. And that's really kind of coming from a science background. Being a science teacher is really what I was looking for just all the way through. I wanted our teachers to spend less time scrambling to gather materials and more time researching the content and specifically looking at ways to teach that content to our students rather than looking for all of the resources. That should be our job up here is helping them, or giving them a program that has the resources available so that they're really able to use what we're offering instead of having to look here and there and everywhere, kind of like discovery education had us doing. So I was kind of moving away from that. I wanted to offer these students hands-on learning. That's what I taught when I was a teacher. That's how I believe our students best learn is by getting their hands on materials. So that's our middle school program. We're looking at lab aids, which offers, it offers actually like, it's really nice. If you look online, there's like shelves of materials that come with labs for every single lesson. And it's very organized, it has teacher manuals, it has actual books that are really nice lab books that are going to bring our students up to the next level. It also offers some online options for students as well. But we're kind of moving from that just virtual textbook to more of a lab book, which is what research is showing that our students are learning more from. And it is a very, it is like a lab book more so than a textbook. This is like having our students walk through the scientific method and different procedures. And again, looking at elementary, we are looking at Horton, or sorry, Horton-Mifflin Hardcore Science Dimensions program, which again, is something that we're going to bring that will have a container full of materials for our teachers, that will have also workbooks for our students that will be comparable to an interactive notebook type of material, but also be their textbook as well. So that way, they're starting to learn like how to take notes and labeling and how they can use the hands-on materials and what that has to do with like taking notes in the procedure of science. So that also will come with all of the materials. Teachers will spend less time looking for materials and scrambling to get materials for their lessons. It will come with everything ready to go for them. Again, teacher manuals and books available for the students. I wanted to make sure that we had programs that were vetted, that were evidence-based, that were comparable to what some of these higher-level counties are using for our students in Kent County because our students deserve some of the best curriculum. So our committee was able to narrow it down to these two options. Yep.
And you could hear from the discussion that she shared with you, the summary of it. She's very passionate about this particular area. And Amelia listened closely to what the teachers were saying. And they said the greatest struggle for them was the preparation, especially if you're an elementary teacher, teaching all the different subjects and then having to put a lab together. So this simplified some of that process. Again, tonight, we bring it to you for information only. We do have books available over on the table to leave for you to have an opportunity to look through. We can also send online links if that is something that you prefer. I did want to, and I briefly mentioned to Dr. Couch, the one thing that worries me a little bit is the timing. Because if we want to move forward with an adoption and have the materials arrive in our schools when, before the students get there, we probably want to think about placing that order rather quickly. So I don't come with you with a solution for this, but it is something to think about. Tonight is for information only. And if there is a way for us to fast-track it a little bit, that might be something that you can discuss with one another. The sooner we can gain approval for our recommended textbooks, the better for the science teachers and science team.
Maybe we should ask legal what he thinks about this.
If you want to fast-track it tonight, move to amend the agenda who are to vote to approve it tonight. Just appropriately document the nature of this action.
So, thank you. I, right, I wasn't sure exactly how to word that. So that's why we were coming to you tonight because typically, we would do that for information and then come back again. My worry was the timing. So thank you. If that's acceptable, that may be the way that we would go. I guess I'll leave that to President Getz and the team to think about whether it moves to amend it to approval or if you just want to keep it for information only.
Yeah, so I'm not going to be the only authoritative person on it. So I'd ask the board members what your pleasure would be if you want to fast-track or if you'd like to stay the course. It's a decision by all of us.
I have a question just real quick. It sounds wonderful, especially that all the materials and everything are being provided. I'm curious if we, do our classrooms currently have the storage space for those materials? And then do they all have access to a sink or whatever lab stuff that presumably would be in a classroom for them to access to be able to use those materials?
So at the elementary level, where they would require water, it is accessible. It is, it does, it's not necessary that it be directly in a third, fourth, and fifth grade classroom. And the kits, as Amelia observed when she visited the schools, are not going to take up a tremendous amount of space. I mean, it is something that they could probably store in a closet nearby. It's not going to be a big shelf that would take up half their classroom.
Thank you. My thought is I would be willing to fast-track this if other board members feel the same way.
So might I make a suggestion that if you're so inclined, you could make a motion to amend the agenda? See if you get a second and then vote on that. And then we could then make a motion to approve.
Okay.
So the question on, in front of us is, is there a motion to amend the agenda to?
Fast-track.
I'm sorry?
To fast-track.
To fast-track the K through eight science curriculum and textbook.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to fast-track the K through eight science curriculum and textbook agenda item to, for the board to be able to vote this evening.
Please, I'll second that. We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan, a second by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions? We'll go ahead and call for the vote on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And I believe, Maddie, you can provide one also.
Aye.
We have aye, the ayes have it. We have officially amended the agenda for this evening to allow for a vote for this curriculum and textbook. Now.
We are grateful. Thank you.
Now we need a motion.
That may be happy enough.
I'm seeking a motion, or administration has asked for a motion to approve the expenditures, correct?
For the K through five.
For the K through, K eight science curriculum and textbook. Right?
Right. It's, well, it's for K through five science curriculum and then piloting the six through eight.
There we go. Do we have a motion to do so?
I will make a motion to approve the K through five science curriculum and pilot program.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan, we have a second by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Maddie?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. Approved as presented.
Now I'll say thank you.
As amended, not presented. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, thanks everyone. The next item on the agenda is the KCPS MAP analysis.
Thank you very much. This next slideshow will be an overview of our progress, and it will also share the end of the year measures of academic progress data, beginning with the early year kindergarten, running all the way through the school systems that, the different grade levels where we have administered MAP.
And could I add that this is not the state test? This is our local assessment that we use, our formative assessments that we provide to our students. We're still waiting for the state results, which we hope to get.
There has not been a definitive answer yet.
Yeah, we've gotten, yeah, that's the MCAP. So this is not MCAP. This is the MAP, which is a very different test. And it's just local.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Couch. And so our local assess, assessment is an important indicator, we believe, in terms of looking at the progress that students are making from the beginning to the middle to the end of the year. As you know, we put several initiatives into place this year in the early years focused on meeting the requirements of the Ready to Read Act. And this is the first year that we administered the reading portion of the MAP, which is part of Maryland Leads, the Maryland Leads Grant, and all of the emphasis on helping our students become proficient readers honor before third grade. We also have adopted the new curriculum in our middle school. If you recall, wit and wisdom, grades six through eight. So again, some of the information that we'll be tucking away as we look at the results is the impact that we're seeing. Any type of new curriculum, instruction, pedagogy, it's going to take time to see those results, but it's always important to keep our finger on the pulse of what is happening. So we used our results this year, K through two in ELA, with the fluency portion of the data, to really drive the goals that the schools set at the school level and also at the district level. So this slide is really showing specifically the results of kindergarten. If you look on the left-hand side, phonological awareness, what we see on the far left is the percent of students that were proficient in this area at the beginning of the year. So sixty-five percent of our kindergarteners were proficient in the area of phonological awareness in the beginning of the year, and by the end of the year, that increased all the way to ninety-two percent. Same thing with phonics and word recognition, tremendous gains, again, bumping all the way up to ninety-two percent. This is so important because this is the year where they lay that foundation for really beginning to hear the sounds in the words and segment the words, pull the words apart, blend them together. It's all the beginning stages of becoming a proficient reader. The other piece of that in kindergarten is language comprehension. And language comprehension looks at both visual and auditory, and it is a way really to help us think about specific interventions that students may need. So this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, under the special education leadership of Dr. Keen sitting back there, we've really partnered up and we are looking at including even more teachers receiving the Orton-Gillingham training. I don't know if you're familiar with those words, but the Orton-Gillingham is really what we, we believe is one of the missing pieces in early reading. If you have a child that's struggling to read and a teacher doesn't have that extensive training, it's hard to know what to do to help them get over that hump to become proficient. So I'm really proud of what our small system is doing, which is really changing the way we're approaching reading in the early years and giving greater both time and intensity to the instruction. And these results on this slide are showing that it's beginning to pay off.
Are we providing Orton-Gillingham training to all of our ELA teachers, or is it a specific subgroup that is working with interventions?
I'm going to let Dr. Keen share where we are with that. I know what our intention is.
And is the training ongoing then, or you're trained and then, do you have in-house trainers? So we are currently applying teachers who has applied to become a trainer, trainer, she's not, she's only a teacher trainer. It is not an intensive process. There is an extensive application, extensive training, and she has to do so many trainings with a certified trainer before she can be released.
Okay.
However, we also have contracted with the company, they are providing follow-up teaching with their teachers who have been trained so that they're able to come back with all of their questions and what sort of, what is, who's trained, their teachers on how to implement this for tier one, tier two, and tier three instruction.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Question, have you discussed this with any of the folks at Radcliffe Creek School? Because that's what they teach there. That's the Orton-Gillingham is their whole program.
So have we discussed?
Have you segue with anyone over there? Have you discussed it, or is this a program you brought on by yourselves?
No, so many of us were trained many years ago using Orton-Gillingham approaches. We have been looking at how to get more teachers trained. We do not partner with Radcliffe, and they're not who is providing our training, are providing our training. We have done two different companies with some different training, but NC, the multi- approach to teaching reading is the company that we have contracted with to finish training. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So we have a heavier dose of Orton-Gillingham taking place as we move into the new school year as well. And that's really enhanced the, the, that portion of the reading blocks. So not only are the students having a chance to read and focus on comprehension, but if they're struggling to learn how to read, the, what Wendy just described are some of the actions that we're taking to address that as well. What we're looking at on this slide are the results of our first and second graders in an area called set, sentence reading fluency. And this is a combination of both listening and picture vocabulary. And sentence reading fluency is often described as the gateway to reading. So if you think about when someone's learning to read, they're learning how to decode the words, but when they start approaching that sentence reading fluency, now they're putting it together so that it makes sense and they're becoming much more fluent, and it's almost more like speaking when they're reading. So they call that the gateway to comprehension, which is where we now begin to think about how we measure reading when we look at the next grade levels. So this slide shows something that you have seen for a number of years, it's very busy. I'm going to just try to bring hopefully a little clarity to this slide. I'd like you to focus your eyes on the column that's labeled Spring 22 ELA, and we left that one white. All the others are in green and yellowish colors. But if you look at that one column, Spring 22 ELA, that is where as a board, we decided, we, you decided to set the baseline for setting our goals for this school year. So as a district, last year in the spring, thirty percent of our students overall were meeting levels four and five on the MAP assessment. And I just want to say out loud, because I appreciate Dr. Couch reminding us again, this is not the state assessment, this is a local assessment, and we, as a school system, focused on fours and fives, which is a very high bar. I mean, that's, they're scoring in, you know, the top percentiles to get in that fours and five. So we are, are reaching for very rigorous targets. And if you look, we knew that we were going to administer that same assessment in the fall, right next to it on the right. So in the beginning of the year, last spring, thirty percent met the projected outcome. And in the fall, if you look, it dipped by one percentage point. And then we had the discussion in the fall, should we keep it at thirty or just, you know, move it to twenty-nine percent? And it was decided to keep the goal as we set it, as thirty percent is the baseline, and then set our projection, which you see on the far right, we decided to make our projection double what the state set. So the state was plus two point two four, and we set our projection at plus four point four two. And that was the target that we expected to grow over the course of one year. Where are we now? So what this slide will show is as a district, in the winter, we moved from twenty-nine percent in the fall to thirty-two percent in the winter, to thirty-one percent at the end of the year. And you may wonder, you know, why would it go up a percent and then down a percent? Well, to meet the target, we have to keep in mind that the bar raises every time they take the assessment, because this is a nationally normed assessment, and it's going, the, the, the target that you're trying to reach increases as the year goes on. So it's a little complicated way to measure whether or not progress is being made, but we do think it's a fair way to set a target and have us put our, our focus and strategies on what will make a difference in the classroom. So overall, from last year in ELA, we moved from thirty percent to thirty-one. Now you can just look down at each grade level, beginning with grades three through grade ten, and where you see the check marks are the, where the grade levels have actually met the project, met or exceeded the projected target. So this year in ELA, grade five, again, just to say aloud one more time, their baseline was twenty-eight percent, but they ended the year with thirty-six percent of the fifth graders. So they exceeded the four point four two target that we set for that particular grade level. The other thing that you notice here is you'll see success, and the target was met both in grade seven and grade eight as well at the end of the year. So other than that, as you look through, you will see some increase, and that's what we were noticing, because we want to pay attention if, to, to those students that we describe as on the cusp, which is why we're also looking at the three, four, five, which brings me now to the far left, where we're looking at students that have scored at levels three, four, and five. And the same thing applies that we talked about mid-year. Whereas if those students that are on the cusp in level three are able to move over, we're going to have exceeded what our target is. So, I mean, we're going to exceed the set expectations. So this shows that there's a lot of hope and there was growth, and overall, we have increased, but not enough to meet the three, four point four two target in ELA. I'll pause for a minute and just ask, I know that's a lot of information, any questions about that?
It's a pretty big drop from the grade three, Spring twenty-twenty-two.
So grade three, Spring twenty-twenty-two, thirty percent.
To the Spring twenty-three, to twenty-five percent.
That's correct. So that, that is an area where you see a five percent decrease, and one of the things that we know is the thirty percent, and this is true for every grade level, the thirty percent were last, were the previous year's third graders, and you're comparing those third graders to that current third graders. You know what I mean? So you're not really comparing the same students.
The same cohort.
I know.
Okay.
The same cohort. So it's another way to, I don't know that that's a, an easy way to compare.
Yes, yes, I, I understand. But it is, you know, I'd still like to say.
Right, right. And so if we look at that particular cohort, when they took the fall assessment, so they were second graders the previous year, they were at twenty-three, and they grew two percentage points, twenty-three to twenty-five over the course of the year. But again, we set the target to thirty-four because we based it on the spring data from the previous year. Right. We also know that's why we've had the emphasis in K through two on all of the foundational skills, because I think you are correct in saying, there's an issue when you're coming with such a small percentage of students meeting that target early on in the year. We need to change what we're doing in those early years in reading.
Yeah, but there's that drop from the fifth grade cohort to sixth grade, and then the seventh grade to eighth grade.
And are you comparing, just so I understand, are you comparing the spring to the fall or the?
I'm looking at grade seven, Spring twenty-twenty-two, thirty percent, to the grade eight, Spring twenty-three, twenty-eight percent.
Correct. And that was a two percent drop?
Right.
So again, I, and again, I think that's an important way to think about it, looking at it in cohorts. And we've done that before with our state data. I find that very valuable, because you can truly look at growth with the same cohort of students. But when we set our goals as a district, we set them for a grade level based on the spring data. So I'm trying to report it back to you the way we had been asked to kind of measure ourselves over the course of the year.
The dip between the fifth grade cohort to sixth grade, I think is, for me, probably most concerning, because I think by sixth grade, we're really having, should be having some high expectations for students and their reading ability.
Beginning, ending their fifth grade year at twenty-eight percent, beginning their sixth grade year twenty-two percent.
Right.
And moving to the end of the year, twenty-six percent. But again, I hear what you're saying, which is, the whole thing's rather alarming. It's a, it's not nearly where we would hope.
I understand that it gets tougher, but they, yeah, you would want them to be able to follow.
And again, what I ask everyone to consider is to also look at the threes, fours, and fives, and that's, we hear the same discussion with the state. That's why even when Mr. Shodri presents the data, he's not just having us focus on the, God bless you, those that are meeting the target, but looking at the on the cusp students as well, because that's what's going to push us over to that next level.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's, in the threes, fours, and fives for that fifth to sixth drop is the fifty-one to forty-one percent.
Mm-hmm. Right, same thing happens. Those transition years, they seem to really.
Those are tough.
Tough year.
It is a tough year. I have another way to share it with you, unless there are more questions about this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the questions, too. So now we are looking, as we've been asked to do, across the schools, so we can compare the performance of our schools in ELA. And if we want to again, begin with just the target that was set by looking at the middle slide, Spring twenty-two ELA, you'll see as a district, it's thirty percent. And then you can look at our various schools, and where they started last year, you know, did they go up or down when they took it again in the fall? And then what happened as they journeyed across the year? And you can see the various levels of performance. So on this slide, it's also interesting, because you'll see, if you look, look at the percentages in our threes, fours, and fives, again, that is a story of hope and progress, because you're seeing so many students that are really bubbling up there and getting to the level where we're going to be able to not only meet, but exceed the expectations that are set. And we have one other way that we wanted to show the information as well, and that would be by looking at our student groups. And if you'll remember, when we set the targets for our student groups, we, as a school district, set even just higher level targets for each of these areas, because we wanted to expect even greater gains. Looking in the spring again, in particular, our English learners, where there were no students at levels four and five, and ending the year with five percent for the English learners. That part of that story is our numbers are tiny, and that may be two students moving it from zero to five percent. So you have to keep in mind, as you're looking at these numbers, there's a lot that factors into it when you turn it into percentages. Sometimes I, I feel like we should have the, the number along with the percent, just to tell the story a little, make it a little bit easier to understand.
The N size makes a difference.
The N size makes a big difference.
Why, I'm probably being a dunce about this, but.
Why, I'm probably being a dunces about this, but why do we start with three, four, and five and then only compare four and five? I, I feel like it's harder to.
I feel like it's a lot of information.
Well, I feel like it's, I don't know. Why don't we just compare three, four, and five and three, four, and five?
With the, with, well, we're comparing three, four, and five on the left so that we have in our, in our mind, the students that are on the cusp. So they would be the students, that would be the percent if we were able to meet, move the students that are right on the verge of meeting proficiency. And we also include the four and five because that is what we decided as a district that we wanted to set as our target.
And, and I think.
So we're really not comparing, never mind, I, I think I get it. I'm, I'm trying to compare like one year with another year, but really we're comparing them with each other.
We are.
Right?
Exactly.
Okay.
And one of the reasons why we weren't really sure about doing fours and fives and three fours and fives is we haven't made the determination of how MAP correlates with MCAP yet. And we don't know whether MCAP would include threes or a portion of the threes. So just trying to have an opportunity to measure ourselves.
And when we were reviewing the data with some of our principals, they also just wanted to be sure that we were keeping in mind, sometimes there's a celebration within. For example, students with disabilities is an area where the percentage may change. And you see that they started, um, last fall was seven percent, but in the fall, last spring it was seven percent, in the fall, eleven percent, by the end of the year, eight percent. But we have students also that qualified and the N changed because some of them may have been dismissed from services. So now you don't even, you're not measuring the same number. Right? So it, it does get a little confusing when you're just putting it in a chart if you don't know the story behind the numbers as well. And I, I only wish that Nicole were here tonight with me because I want you to really take a moment and just take in the amount of green checks that are on this slide. They are showing grade levels that met the target in the area of mathematics this school year. So they met the target that was set. As a district, this is the, probably the first time we've ever been able to state, you know, as a school system, that we set that target and it was met in the area of mathematics. And that's all attributed to the work that our teachers are doing day in and day out to really stay true to the, the resources and the standards that need to be taught in the area of mathematics. As you know, this year, through Maryland leads, Nicole partnered with Jess Arminio and both, Jess Arminio, Jess Cloud, sorry, I can't remember when, once they get married, I can't remember the correct name. But they have been a dynamite team going in to provide support. And there have also been coaches in every school for the very first time. And that additional, you know, hands-on support and being able to provide onsite coaching has been instrumental, just in understanding all the resources that are there to help make that instruction quality as we're embracing so many changing resources, standards, curriculum throughout the year. So I think that really, that really is something that needs to be recognized. And our teachers have done a phenomenal job. It's beginning in kindergarten, moving students. And notice they're missing for the spring target. That's because they did not take that assessment last spring. So we don't have that data. That's why it's not up there. But if you compare our fall data to the end of the year, you'll see growth across almost every grade level in the area of mathematics. We'll look at it another way here, just by looking at the various schools. And although Galuna doesn't have a check, I do want to say out loud that they were so close. So they moved from thirty percent, they had a little dip in the winter, and bumped right back up to thirty-two. And their goal was at thirty-three point nine. So again, you can see the growth and you, you can see consistent growth throughout. So the only area in, on this particular side, the middle school is an area of concern because we did remain rather flat in the middle school performance overall in mathematics. And just like in ELA here, we're paying attention to how students did in the various student groups. And this was an example where the English learner group did meet the projection. We saw an increase from eleven percent to sixteen percent, fours and fives, for the African-American student group. Students with disabilities moved from six percent to eleven, and then farm from eighteen to twenty-two. Growth, but not enough growth in some of those areas to meet the target. This is putting the same information in just the format that we, as a system, have committed to put it to the public. So we call it our local dashboard. And again, it just, it's a nice display and it's showing both the forty, sixty-first percentile would be your fours and fives and the forty-first percentile are students meeting the threes, fours, and fives overall. So in summary, this just is a review of the goals that we set. And you can see where we landed with that goal in the spring and showing again that the, although the ELA goal did not meet, it did improve and it's, did not meet the target. But in math, it did exceed the target as well. So they were at thirty percent. And with that, just pause and ask if there are any questions or comments for the end of the year local assessment?
I have a question. I'm really happy to see the math going up. That's, that's great. In regards to the reading, please, I hope everyone on this board will read, including you, read these articles that I found in newspapers over the last four weeks. It all relates to the phonics and the reading and everything you're trying to do. And I think there's some great ideas in there, in my opinion, so.
Sure. Thank you.
I'm happy to see the math going up.
Thank you.
Will we continue with the, I, I want to say it was sort of the intervention for all sort of method when we start school up again in the fall? I know what we were trying to, to do some catch-up from COVID, but do you feel like that's something that, that will continue?
So we will continue what we call a multi-tier system of support for our students. So we are really expanding our tier one, and you heard Dr. Keen describe, with more intensity in those foundational skills. This will be year two of the professional development of what's called the letters training, which again, is Kent County's commitment based on what we have put in our Maryland leads grant. And that's all aligned to the latest research in reading. It speaks to the gaps that some of our teachers that have graduated, perhaps even, you know, ten years ago, twelve years ago, that did not have that type of reading methods course. This is an amazing course and all of our teachers are engaged in catching up on the most current best practices in the area of reading. That's the letters training. So this will be year two of the letters training and reading. And then your question about will they get the interventions? The answer is absolutely. We are so fortunate that we're going to be able to continue with our high-quality school day tutoring during the day. So we'll have the SSCs continue to support. And then a menu of interventions that are offered during the school day based on the needs of the students. And some of those include things like the sound partners. You've heard that presented a couple of times from the Rock Hall tutors. And we even have now a greater menu of options at the school level and are really getting better at aligning what intervention speaks to best addressing gaps based on whatever the test results are showing us.
And what I would also say is, one of the things that we put in place this past year is, we had, when we first started doing the learning walks, we did it once a year. The year before, we did it twice a year. Last year, we did it three times a year. And one of the things that we noted, at least it was highly notable for me, was that our principals were very in tune to looking at their data and saying, you know, in between the first learning walk to the second, this is not working, what can we do instead? So I think there's more focus and a clear direction in using the available data to change course if that's what we need to do. And I think it's reflective on the scores that we had in math. And hopefully we can take that and move forward with utilizing the data to self-correct, if you will, and/or this is not working for this group of kids, what else can we do?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that was for information only. No action was required by the Board of Education. So if there are no other questions, we'll move on to the FY twenty-four reopening plan.
I'm sorry, one more. So, good evening. This is the reopening plan. This is very simple, though. I am pleased to say that this will be the last time I'm bringing the reopening plan to you for your information. And it is part of a requirement because we receive funds that are the ARP-ESR funds. And that requires us to reevaluate our reopening plan every six months. Our teams met and when they convened, we had no changes to our reopening plan, other than we did double-check to be sure that we were in line with the current CDC guidance. And we have updated our dashboard to include the data that I shared with you tonight. So other than that, when we reevaluated our reopening plan with the rubric, it was same, 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 all the way through. So tonight it is for information only. It is a requirement and I will work with Mr. Davilia. We will post it on our website so the public can see that plan. And then we are required to submit it to MSDE in August. So this was for information only.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Jackomelitz. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I just ask for a pause for just a moment? I, I failed to introduce someone who was not here when she was approved as our new supervisor of student services. And I see that she's out in the, and out in the audience. And so I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Dr. Walker, who is taking Tracy Williams. She's the new improved Tracy Williams.
Welcome. Okay, we'll move into administrative services. The first item up is expenditures and revenue report. Ms. Stewart.
Good evening, present and guests, Dr. Cowles, members of the board, and welcome, Madison, as you join along with us. Congratulations. Tonight, we're going to go over the monthly revenue, um, financial report. We'll start with the revenues. As you would notice with this particular port, report, this is tentative. And I noted tentative because it is prior to any recodes and adjustments as we finalize year-end. So as we go along, you will see where we're at currently. So as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for Fund One, you will see that we have receipts of about thirty-eight point three million. Fund Three, which is school construction, five point five million. Fund Five, one point seven million for food service. Nothing for Fund Seven, giving us a tentative cash receipt of forty-five thousand six, forty-five million, six hundred thousand, eighty-six dollars and eighty-two cent. When we go to the next page, as you will see, I'm not sure if I can lower this, but kind of want to give the board and everyone just a snapshot. As of now, prior to any recodes, we are over expended by eighty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and eleven cents. So pretty much we've expended a hundred percent of our budget, essentially. Now, we're not going to be there, but this gives the picture of where we are with a tight budget and how extreme we need to be with looking at our budget. So, and you can see where it has the column, we're remaining balance. The applicable categories to the left, where you have your admin, mid-level, operations, maintenance, you would know that some of our higher-end expenses and costs is transportation, operations of plant. So once we do the recodes, then essentially I will come back to the board to do our budget We go to our school construction. As you will see here, this is itemized based on the progress of what we've been doing with our school construction and what has been expended so far. We have our food service fund. Here, it's kind of the opposite. As you know, with food service, there is a potential fund balance of about four hundred thousand dollars that we have in food service. And that's where we brought to you, the board, showing our plan on how to spend on those funds because essentially we are not to have that big of a fund balance with food service. So we do have a plan and now we're starting to purchase a lot of the upgrading, the equipment, and things need for the kitchen. So even though it's showing that we're overspending, we're really not. And then you have your restricted funds. This is our grant funding report. And then lastly, just the overall of our receipts and expenditure comparison. Any questions?
I have a question, and it might be more of a question for Mr. Kirby if he'd been here, but I just noticed in the last two weeks, been working on the lights out at the stadium. How far along are we on that? Do you know? Do you know, Dr. Cowles?
That I'm unsure about.
Okay, any additional questions? This was for information purposes only. No action was required. With that being said, we'll move over to the next item, donation.
All right. So for this request, administration is requesting board approval for the football donation from Mr. Frank Rhodes. Frank Rhodes would like to donate two thousand, two hundred dollars to the Kent County High School Football Program to purchase practice shorts and jerseys.
And book bags.
And book bags.
Sorry. Just make that.
Sorry. So we are requesting, administration is requesting board approval for this donation.
I have a question about, not the specific donation, but generically, how donations like that work? If somebody wants to make a contribution to a sports team, for example, where, where would Mr. Rhodes be? Who's, Mr. Rhodes writing that check to?
It would be Kent County Public Schools. And it will come to central office and we put, we create a budget line specifically for that donation.
Okay.
And I know one of the things that was brought up, while it, it would not impact Title IX because there is no women's football team, but in reality, any kind of donation could in fact impact Title IX because it's total women's teams versus total men's teams. So it's not just because we don't have a women's football team, it's what is the totality of women's teams versus men's teams, if you will. So we have to be cognizant of that. We don't just look at it as there's not a reciprocal sport with women. It's, that's why we have, in some cases, we have a lot of options like cheerleading and those other things because football is such a large program, we have to offset it and make sure we have enough women's programs to make it equal.
I did speak to Mr. Taylor about that and he said over the last years, they have had women playing on the football team. I don't know when.
But that doesn't, that doesn't really impact Title IX. It's total women's teams versus total men's teams.
So the check comes to Kent County Public Schools?
Yes.
How does it find its way to the, to the sports team?
In that regard, I wait to receive the invoice. And then once I receive the invoice, we code it to that actual donation. So essentially, the revenue, it's coded to, donation is coded to a revenue. So we expand against that revenue account. So essentially, it washes at the end to show that when you go to here, you can see where the donation was made and where the expense comes out of.
So does, so does the check to pay for that actually come from Kent County Public Schools?
Yes.
Okay.
So we pay, we pay that out. And sometimes the instances will code the donation to the revenue and then create a separate expense account. But most of the time, if it's a donation, we just use that revenue line to show that part of the donation.
Would the items that are being purchased by this donation ordinarily be covered by a budget item or is it something that like the athletic boosters could fundraise for?
Athletic boosters, I would say it could be, it's a combination between Kent County Public Schools and the athletics gate receipts. A lot of our athletic needs that we've purchased has been used, given like our gate receipts and offset with our other budget lines, but it kind of could be, Dr. Cowles could go in more detail.
Yeah, what I would say is typically, book bags are outside of what we would typically buy with our, with our stu, I mean, with our school allocation. Our allocation that we provide to the athletics department via KCPS are to buy uniform replacements. And the jerseys and the shorts are really above and beyond that. And so it wouldn't necessarily be covered under the budget for athletics. And the book bags, obviously. And the book bags, obviously, would be something above and beyond, that we wouldn't typically allocate our local funding towards. This would be above and beyond.
I don't begrudge the football program these items. I think it's, it's great that they can have these items. I am a little concerned about what could appear as a board member showing favoritism towards a specific team or sport. So, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to know how to, to move forward with, with this. I mean, I guess I just want to discuss what the other board members feel about that.
Well, I guess, I guess for me, I would just, I would just be curious as to, I mean, obviously, there's very specific expenditures here. I mean, I mean, how is it better? Like, was Mr. Taylor involved? Was the boosters involved? Was the, only because there's, there's all, there's all these other sports. I'm just curious, because I was curious as to how we got to that, because it's very specific.
Well, first of all, I want to keep moving through the sports program. I can only do, work with the basketball team. I think our sports are really important. And one thing about the football, I mean, the book bags, is that I talked to Mr. Somerville, and I don't want any team members to, I don't want anyone to fail off a team. And that's one thing. And he said, this will be a great idea. They could bring books. Now, who knows if they're going to use them on the bus or whatever, but I think it would be a nice thing. And I want to move into other teams. I can't guarantee where I'm going to like to help the base, all of them. I'd really like to get involved. I think sports is very, very important at our school. I think it helps with the studies, and people feel like the board, they're backed up. I'm not trying to do this myself and look like it's a board member, but I want to help. I think it helps a lot of people, in my opinion.
So, so was, was the athletic director, or the principal, or boosters in the conversation?
The athletic director was, and the principal of the high school was, and that's about it. I mean, I, I discussed it with them, not like.
Each, each team has a booster club, and there's the all-sports booster club. So, I guess I just wondered why those expenses didn't come out of the booster clubs.
Well, first of all, the booster club is, is supposed to be a 501(c)(3), and they're not even legal. They haven't been, they're, they're not a legal 501(c)(3), which I don't know if that really makes a difference, but I'm just pointing that out, because if you give money to them, is that an illegal thing, saying that they're 501(c)(3)? I don't know all the details about, about that. I just, I just don't know. And Dr. Couch said we'll talk to Ms. Hempstead about it, so I don't.
And I have talked with Ms. Hempstead about it. She has reached out to Miles Lawler, and he explained it's fairly simple to get back into, quote, "compliance." It's a matter of paying the $175 fee and filing some paperwork, so she's in the process of getting that done.
That's great. That's great.
Okay. Okay, the administration is requesting board approval for Frank Rhodes' donation of $2,200 to the KCHS football program. Do we have a motion to approve?
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Do you see yourself maybe also donating, donating some money for educational purposes?
Sure. But right now, I can only do so much at a time.
Yeah, because I know you're like a fan of sports.
I am a fan of sports, because I think it helps education a lot. And I think the late bus is wonderful, because kids can stay after school to study, and they can do more sports. And we want to keep our students here. I don't want to see them move away. I want the best we can. I want our students to have the best, and I want them to feel they have the background. And I know all, everyone on the board here is behind the students in their sports, at least, I think so. It's my opinion.
Yeah, I just asked that question, because I know that, you know, you have the ability to do what you're doing. I mean, I thank you for it, but I just was wondering if it would be something you would consider sometimes, if they needed something.
Sure. I just need to get input on that, you know? I just want to keep helping. I want, I feel I've done a lot already.
How, how did this particular thing come about? Did Mr. Somerville come to you and say, we could use this? Or did you say, Mr. Somerville, what would you like?
No, I talked, I talked to Mr. Somerville about it, and I said, could you use anything for the football team? And he goes, yes, practice shirts and jerseys, or pants would be really nice. And then, he brought up the football. And it was going to be a lot more money, and then he got a better deal. We tried to do it in, or he tried to do it with Baycraft, but it, that's just, it didn't work out. I wanted to do local business.
So, did, Ms. Stewart, so how does that work? Does the coach go out and sort of pick and choose where he's going to have that stuff made and, and get the, get a bid?
I mean, essentially, given our, yeah, their, the portion processes, if it's under $5,000, you need to have at least two to three quotes, including the one that you want to go with. We do encourage, you know, purchasing from our local businesses, but it's in that good faith that they're doing the research to look at that. So, that's kind of how that works on that end. If they're, well, excuse me, let me retract. If it's under $5,000, they still need to like do their best search. $5,000 to $24,999 is when you actually need the two to three quotes. So, like I said, we do encourage utilizing the local business, and sometimes, to be honest, the, you know, kind of getting the vendors, and that can be a little difficult at times.
So, is this a local business?
Um.
We don't know?
We don't know yet.
I'm not sure.
I mean, we're, we're.
So, we have no quote?
No, we're approving.
He had one quote for $2,200. That's what Harold told me.
Right. So, we're, we'll approve the donation, and then, we'll have to see where it lands in terms of getting all of the available quotes. I did want to note that specifically for Title IX, it says, "When a school offers boys and girls athletic teams," the Title IX regulations require that the school offer equivalent benefits, opportunities, and treatment to its boys' and girls' teams overall. So, it's not just looking at, okay, well, there's no female football team, or it's a matter of overall, are we treating the boys' teams the same as the girls' teams? Answering no to any of these questions may indicate a possible Title IX violation. So, obviously, we have to be careful.
Do we have that data available to date of, of how women's teams at our school have received donations versus how men's teams have received donations? Do we, how do we track that?
Well, as far as I've been here, I, we haven't received, to my knowledge, any donations when it comes relative to sports. It's just been uniforms. Like, this past year, I know we had to, they do, it's a, I'm not point on it, but there is like a rotation for getting uniforms for all the sports, because that becomes like the heft, you know, a hefty cost. But donations-wise, not to, to my knowledge. And I don't know if it's, it's something that people just don't know not to donate, or?
Will, will these items then become the, be owned by the students, or will they be returned for the next year of team members?
My assumption, they will be owned by the, the students, essentially. I mean, unless that would be up for discussion with, if you just get like a general, you know, jerseys and, for shorts and jerseys, that could fit or be uniform, but I'm not.
I'd like to read something. I got this out of your made, one of your made books. It's the case of Horner v. Kentucky High School Athletic Association in 1994. Provides an illustration that Kentucky High School Athletic Association, which had a men's fast-pitch baseball team, failed to offer a fast-pitch softball team for female students. Two surveys revealed that only 9% and 17%, respectively, of the females surveyed were interested in a fast-pitch softball team for women. Furthermore, female students were not prohibited from trying out for the men's team. The federal court concluded that plaintiffs had failed to show that the needs and abilities of female students were not being adequately accommodated. And that's what Mr. Taylor said. There have been women playing for the football team, so I'm just.
But that's not even an issue.
I know, but I wanted to, I just wanted to bring that up.
Right.
I think what she was saying is like the basketball team for the boys, and if you donate for the basketball team for the boys, then we have to consider the basketball team for the girls, because it's all girl, all boy.
We did that. I did that last year.
So, you donated for both?
A basketball machine that could be used for both teams.
They were used for both teams.
Oh, okay. But that's the example, I'm saying.
Yeah, I get it.
Because it's all boy, all girl.
Okay, the administration is requesting board approval for Frank Rhodes' donation of $2,200 to the KCHS football program. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Dorsey. Do we have a second?
I'll second the discussion, in case there's any more discussion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further conversation or discussion?
Is it likely that these items would be purchased if this donation was not accepted?
Not really, because like, as Dr. Couch.
We don't have the funding to do that, above and beyond what we have.
And, and it's not a necessity, right? I mean, it's not needed to put our team out there to, to practice or play, right?
Well, you don't need a book bag to play. So, so I would say, for the most part, I mean, this is, in my view, this is above and beyond. We would provide the basic needs for putting the team on the field. This is above and beyond. This is a want, not a need.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further comments, questions? We'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
You're allowed to vote.
I guess, isn't he? Is he allowed to vote?
Uh-uh.
I, I'll ask legal counsel what he says.
No, he's the one who ate it.
Best that he abstained from the subject of the donation. It's kind of odd.
Okay. All right, so no, you can.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so I'll call it again. All those in favor?
I, I feel at this point that it is something that our football program would feel was being taken away from them if we, if we don't accept this. So, I'm, I'm going to say a reluctant yea.
So, I need to call the vote. I, I need to know how many ayes are there?
I'll vote yes with reservations, but I'll vote yes. I think Ms. Dorsey said yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any nays? I vote no. We have one abstention, and Mattie?
I say yea.
Okay, we have a yea. So, the yeas have it. Great. We're moving on to sole source justification. Rock Hall Elementary School walk-in freezer.
All right. So, as stated prior, essentially, oh, I'm sorry, Bill. As stated prior, with food service, one of the needs was a walk-in freezer at the Rock Hall Elementary School. Due to, with the walk-in freezer, that helps to store a lot of the, the food orders that we have intake coming in for our schools. Right now, we're dealing with an issue of getting multiple quotes from vendors and going up to a time constraint with the time the school starts, because with the walk-in freezer at Rock Hall, there's going to have to be a lot of work that's going to be put into it, given where the kitchen is and how to put the walk-in freezer. And right now, we're having some difficulty obtaining quotes. We have received the grant, the C and discretionary grants, limited availability grant from MSD in January, that can be used to purchase the walk-in freezer. And so, administration is requesting board approval for, to sole source our vendor for the walk-in freezer. And the vendor name is the Central Restaurant Products. We do have the documentation where we have reached out to multiple vendors and have heard no response, but now, we're concerned that we won't be able to obtain the freezer, given the time constraints of the grant, because I believe the grant ends the end of next year, and given the time constraints of needing, the urgency and the need for, for that. So, we are asking a board approval to proceed with the sole source from Central Restaurant Products in the amount of $47,554.13.
Does the grant cover that total amount?
Yes.
And is that amount competitive even without other estimates? Is it, is it about what you were anticipating, or?
I would say yes, roughly, given that. And we try to look, given, knowing that, you know, with our purchasing policy, and we've done our best to do that and to reach out, but it becomes that sole source because of that time constraint, and we have reached out on the state on our side with food service. And as long as we can show that we took that initiative to look at that, which we do have, we can proceed forward with that.
Is this, does Rock Hall have a walk-in, or is this going to be there first?
Rock Hall doesn't have a walk-in.
That's what I thought. Is Garnet, I know Garnet has one.
That was the second, but Garnet, we got news that that one's about to kind of.
Hit the dirt, Bill.
So.
Taking those.
So, that's part of the fund balance and.
I got you.
Grant thing, so.
Okay, the administration is recommending approval by the Board of Education to award the Rock Hall Elementary School walk-in freezer installation to Central Restaurant Products via sole source in the amount of $47,554.13. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey has the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions?
I would just say that I think Ms. Stewart's made a compelling case of why the sole source is applicable in this case, and why we're not delaying it by trying to get more bids.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have comments. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Let there be ice cream. Okay, we'll move into procedure 400-6, retiree insurance benefits.
Thank you, President Gatz, Dr. Couch, school board members. This is just to provide you with information only on a high-level overview of our retirement insurance benefit procedure that is a little outdated. So, you'll see all the changes in red. Mr. Paul, I'm having a hard time getting it up.
I'm having it.
Okay. Yes, it is a long update, so I would like to just point out the two significant changes. One is, we are just aligning everything with the updated regulations from the state retirement system. Back in 2011, there was another retirement system put in place for anyone hired in the state after 2011, which just outlines what the normal service eligibility of retirement guidelines are. There was a change. That change is basically prior to 2011. Anyone with 30 years of experience could retire at any age if you were hired after 2011. It is the rule of 90, which is basically your age with your combined years of service have to be the equivalent to 90. In addition, we just updated all of the different retirement healthcare contributions, and we wanted to signify all the changes that have been done over the last couple of years, specifically with the ANS unit. So, all those changes are provided for you.
Great.
Throughout the document in red.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. That item was for information only, so we thank you for that, and we will move on to the next item. Ms. Gale, any public participation?
I'd like to, I forgot to mention this during board discussion, and I'm, I'm hoping you guys will give me like 30 seconds. I wanted to look at the potential, I know it's been mentioned a few times, of having a board retreat. So, you know, depending on what that looks like, I, we can start talking about that. Obviously, this summer's going to roll pretty fast. I'm not sure, during the week is kind of killer for me lately, and I envision that to be the same way the rest of the year. So, I know in the past, we have had Saturday morning retreats, and I'm just wondering if you, you know, think that's a good option. I mean, you know, certainly, we can work out what this looks like and, and all of that, but, you know, in my mind, we would spend about three to four hours and kind of mix it up and talk about different topics, as well as, you know, goals for the system and kind of update where we're going. So, I just present that to see kind of what your thoughts are, and we can talk dates and everything later.
Right. I, I would just say that if you want involvement from any of the other administrators, I mean, I would just say a weekday would be easier. I mean, I get that. Maybe there could be a weekday, we could figure it out. If we're only looking at three or four hours, it could be an afternoon. I think mornings are probably tough for you, for sure. Just throw that out there.
Well.
I was going to say, the last, the. I was going to say, the last, the two that I can think of, but I think there's one in between, were held on Saturdays, and they really only involved us. We, this is about us.
Well, I will tell you that for us to have the meeting and for it to be effective, um, I would look to have a facilitator. Um, and certainly, we have resources to look at that. We would certainly need to discuss, obviously, costs and stuff, you know, what the options are. So, but I'd like to, at, for all intents and purposes, have a facilitator manage this retreat for us, um, so that we all can kind of sit back and go through the process and be very open and honest with each other. So.
Yeah, I would say that I would have to know because of our budget.
I agree.
Yeah, I would have to know what that looks like.
Yep.
And if we have available funding to do that.
Sounds good. Okay, so thank you for that. Um, certainly, I'll bring more, more around about that, but I thought that was a great piece, and I apologize for sticking it right in there in public. Um, okay, so the next item, number 10, notification to next meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education of Kent County will be held on Monday, August 14th, 2023, beginning, beginning at 5:30 PM. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 PM. Both meetings will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom at 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland, 21661, this address. And I'm pretty sure there's a CAC announcement.
Yes, CAC meeting on, uh, Monday, July 17th, at 5:30 PM. It'll be the first meeting with our new CAC members.
Great. Okay, the last item on the agenda is to adjourn. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, because the administration is recommending that.
I will make a motion to adjourn, please.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Dorsey. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We have ayes across the board. Motion passes.